There's a chair in the middle for you. Good evening, everybody. We're not quite started because it's only eighteen twenty-nine. I'm going to go by my phone because it looks a lot wrong. Yeah, can you pass the box over to Peter for us, please? So, right, so what we'll do is we'll start. The councillors will just be signing their books. Thank you. So, it is eighteen thirty. We've got quite a lot busy here, so what I must ask is that nobody talks? Thank you. Councillors over in the corner, there is no... All councillors always this very... At council meetings when they can. So, if everybody can... Because of how many people in the room, I think there's some interesting items on the agenda perhaps. So, people should only be speaking when they're invited to speak, okay? And if anybody doesn't like what somebody else says, don't use that as an excuse for you to have a go at them. A light suggestion. If somebody says something you don't like, there's a way for challenging it. But in this meeting, it is meant to be a disciplined, purposeful meeting. So, welcome to the meeting of the Town Council on Wednesday, the twelfth of December. Our last meeting of the year is six thirty PM. Welcome to all the councillors. We have got sort of apologies. We'll come to those in a moment. And I'd like to acknowledge the fact that we've got sixteen... Sixteen members at seventeen, because Steve came in afterwards. Oh, right, okay. Sixteen members of the public here, which is good to see. Where are they the rest of the year? And there'll be an opportunity made for you to join the council. Now, before we go on to any orders of business, what it is is that this week there have been some bereavements associated with the county and specifically with the Town Council. So, I'm going to invite those that wish to stand and are able to stand to stand as we acknowledge a moment's silence for a past clerk of the council, Mr Idris Evans, who passed away. He was over a hundred years old. He was living down in Brighton at the time in a special care facility. I don't know if people who are blind... The gentleman was blind at the time of his death. But he served his council, the county and the Town Council for many, many years. So, we'll be standing for him. And also for councillor Terry King, whose funeral was today. So, I will now stand. Anybody else to stand and observe a moment's silence, please? Okay, thank you very much. You'd all like to take your seats?
Can I make a statement, Chairman? Please?
Yes.
I would like to state that I'm shocked at councillor Lucas's behaviour tonight. I would like to disassociate myself from his remarks during the past week regarding Mr Idris Evans and Mr Terry King. These comments have upset a great number of residents in this town. I would like that minute in full, please. That's why I've written down.
Chairman, I'd just like to respond, and I will stand for the council. I don't want to go into details, but people did see the email why I didn't stand for Terry King. And if they realise how many emails I received and the fact that they supported Mrs Lucas in police action against me, I think I sat very respectfully. And you did give us the option. And I think this is unacceptable conduct for councillor Lucas.
Thank you, councillor Lucas. Thank you, councillor Lucas. Right, so we've gone through two parts.
I'm prepared as well. She can read my mind.
I do bother doing it.
Thank you, councillor.
Yes, I bother doing it.
So, what we've used on the long term... Thank you, everybody. We move on to item one, which is apologies. To receive apologies for...
Oh, sure.
We'll move on to apologies perhaps. We've got apologies for...
For councillor Romney and councillor Neil.
So, take on matters proposed by Daniel. Thank you. Seconded by Peter. Always a show of hands. And that's unanimous. It was Daniel and Peter.
I didn't hear the second name, sorry. No, he said...
Oh, yes, that's right.
I have to sign without talk. I think we've all signed.
I'm sure you'll sort it out for the end of the meeting.
This is the most...
Good, that means you've already declared any interests. Uh, declarations of interests then, of course, you're signing the books. Members are asked to declare... Has anybody got the interest they want to disclose at this point, councillor Lucas?
Yes, number... Item number twelve. As I am a member of the committee, welcome in blue. It's a non-facundary interest, and I shall speak and vote.
Speak and vote.
Yes, I have an interest in item number eight. And it's purely that I live in the road. And despite public comments, I don't object on the basis that that is...
Are you going to be speaking and voting?
I will be speaking and I will be voting.
Brilliant, thank you.
But I have to declare that I live in the road, but I'm not affected in any way by the development.
It's not facundary, I know that.
No.
Anybody else? Joyce, you wanted to move an agenda item.
Oh, yes, please.
If you want to do that at this point.
Can I propose to move agenda item twelve to third up the list so that those of the rest of the century can welcome in blue? Don't have to sit through all these statements.
Okay, so councillor Lucas has proposed at this stage that item twelve floral displays moves after item eight, which is the Rockland Community Trust. So, that's the proposal. Seconded by Daniel. All those in favour? Unanimous. So, we'll discuss the floral displays after eight. Okay. So, back to minutes. To confirm the minutes of the meeting held on Wednesday, the tenth of October. Anybody got any comments or observations? The only person absent was Daniel, I think. So, you won't be able to vote on it. Daniel left up to stay, yeah? Anybody else got any comments or observations? Looking for a proposal for the minutes? Peter, thank you. Seconded by Sally Anne. All those in favour? So, that's everybody except Daniel will be up to say... Yeah. Brilliant, thank you. There's another set of minutes as well.
Would you also... We did an exception.
Yeah, we did an exception as well. There's the minutes from the Ex-Ordinary Meeting on the nineteenth of November.
Oh, actually, no, we can't. Sorry.
Yes. I did wonder.
Oh, no, no, no. Yeah, it's... Sorry.
We're doing it. I'm signing this, all right? Is this the one that we just voted on? I thought we were going for the... So, are we accepting the minutes from the nineteenth of November then?
And there's only abstentions Jean, Joyce and Peter.
Sally Anne, you want to comment on it, really?
No.
Oh, you're proposing it. So, there'll be abstentions from Jean, Peter and...
Joyce.
Joyce, yeah? Right, anybody got any comments or observations on the...
What's that one that's stuck in the middle? Twelve of the things? It's in the wrong order, I think.
Oh, you dropped yours, yeah?
No, the first three were dropped.
That's what I meant. Is that the twelfth of December? That's today.
So, it's anyone then, I'm looking at.
Yes.
Yes, I was there.
Yeah, okay. So, it worked. Proposed by Sally Anne. Seconded by I've got Anne now. All those in favour then? With exception of those that are abstaining. So, we've got one, two, three, four, five, six in favour. Abstentions will be three, that's right, isn't it? Five of us.
Did you count my...
Yes. Well, anyway, so it's... Show of hands again, all in favour of them? Sorry, I can't count.
Some of these people weren't here.
I should have got a score. Do you hear you?
I wasn't there.
Fewer here. Peter. I can't count. You count.
Chandler.
Was he here?
You.
Yeah, you were in.
I could have sworn I was.
No, you weren't. You were the first one. You were the second one.
This is the second one. Right, easily missing one.
Thank you.
Are you here today?
Someone take care of my top. So, that's our agenda. What's mine then?
There's only seven here.
Yeah.
Seven people, yeah.
Right, well done. Right, chairmen's and members' reports. Now, I've only got a verbal report to do. What it is is that I just wanted to report back that I went to Germany, to Barnstead. Um, what it is, I went there as a... What was meant to just be a quick visit for Julie and myself to sort of do a bit of, you know, looking around, I guess. And it became a twinning event with the Barnstead Council and their mayor and all the rest of it. And they gave me this mug, because this is mine, okay? They gave me... I'm officially a member of the Barnstead Club, whatever that is. And also, they gave us this collage of pictures from Barnstead to bring back to the council, which will go probably either in here or somewhere. So, say again? No. Anyway. Right, no. So, anyway, just wanted to report. It was very well worthwhile. And the German people in Barnstead, very friendly, very welcoming. It was a very good event. There were six of us that went, and they're very keen to reinvigorate the twinning. So, anybody in the room that might be interested in that, speak themselves, I guess. Or there is also a twinning committee. Half of us in the room, actually, isn't it? Angie. Angie Francis came. Anyway. Sammy? Other reports, I think. We've got... Yeah, we've got Peter's good at doing it on.
Thank you. Yes, I attended the dementia services group yesterday morning. The mayor volunteered me for it, I don't know why. It was very interesting. And there's a lot happening in Rutland. I think we're very much to the forefront, which is good. There's a dementia health team. There's add more nurses, which is a new government initiative. And they can be accessed from Rockland County Council on desk. They're running a lot of schemes. There's, you know, family centres, various activities, which not only help the individuals, but help the carers. It gives them some respite. So, I think it's pretty good news. It's developing. They can have another nurse next month. I've given the Clark the full pack, but I've just passed around this one, which is produced by Age Concern, which encapsulates the whole thing. Because it's not just one or two.
Julie, is it worth leaving it on the table? So, because you passed it round. I mean, I'd hate for anybody to be disoriented.
Just briefly, parish council forum, three of us attended that. Very good agenda. We learned quite a lot. And we had a transport plan, so we can add to the meeting today. I've since seen the portfolio over as well and had a chat with her. A couple of us were at the funeral today as well. Thank you.
Brilliant, thank you. Joyce?
Just to say, I went to the parish forum meeting. And after twenty-two years of this council, I learnt a lot about all sorts of things. But I liked the integrated transport scheme, Discover Rutland. And when I said that there was more to Rutland than Rutland more to, that quite did cause a bit of a stir. However, we should be using Discover Rutland for anything that we're doing because the very next day, Discover Rutland have got the Gigsaw puzzle on for Rutland. Thank you.
Thank you, goodness. And the next item is councillors' question. Any questions notified to the clerk? I saw your email, Martin, where you're going to be making, reading out statements.
Well, it's not really a statement. It's just stopping me waffling on.
No, that's fine, okay, yes, that's fine. So, there's no questions notified to the clerk? So, we've got a report from the clerk?
I haven't, but all I want to say is, it's not a very nice thing to talk about. We haven't had Christmas yet, but just so everyone knows, the lights will be coming down on the tenth of autumn, which hung around.
Not so early, this year.
Don't come into town.
Yeah. Or maybe, yeah, don't, yeah. What days of the week is that? Okay, right, item seven. At this point here is deputation by the public. Now, there's a lot of public. And obviously, I imagine that somebody would be here because you'd like to say something. If you'd like to say something, you are limited to three minutes. I would like to have a little stop watch on today. Make sure that we don't run over. If you do want to speak, let us know now. And also, which item you want to speak about on the agenda. So, does anybody wants to make a comment? Chris, good evening.
Good evening. I'd like to speak on item...
Twelve floral displays.
Twelve now, yes.
Yes, it was, it was. It's still twelve.
That's good. Thank you.
Chris, can we stand up so we can see it?
If you prefer to sit, then you have to. Oh, yeah, yes, you're allowed to talk now. Yeah, you talk now. No, no, this is the deputation point. This is when the public will speak.
We listen to you now.
I do beg your pardon.
That's all right. And if you... If it's difficult to stand, then you can sit.
Oh, no, I prefer to stand.
You know what I'm saying.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
Push the chairs table a bit more, it's not in the room. We've got the wheelchair.
All right, we've got your chair. Sally Anne, do you want a question for the floor? And then that way the door can then be popped open. Yep, cool, that's good.
Yep. No problem.
No, no. Right, well done. Well done, everybody.
Can you pass me the box of books?
Chris? Okay.
You've got to see the stairs. Sorry. There you go. Okay. No, no, you're all right.
Right, Chris.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Chris Morton, and I'm the chairman of Oakham InBlum. These are some comments to the Town Council about the floral displays for 2019. We are pleased to see that the council seems to realise the value of floral displays in achieving its aim of promoting the town as an attractive place to visit and stay. And hope that this will continue. We understand your concerns about the standard of the current contractor, but would like to offer some comments on your proposed options. We are worried that options two, three and four will be very tight for timing of displays in summer 2019, especially option four, which would effectively make it impossible. Even if the new Town Council made it their first job, may it's too late for any plant supplier to be able to provide anything but their leftovers. And we cannot believe that this would be acceptable. Would therefore like to respectfully offer a fifth option for your consideration, namely, that the contract for floral displays be given for one year only to plant scape, during which time, a full survey can be conducted to see what works or does not, and where savings could be made or money better spent. Following this, that a new specification be drawn up and put out to tender in autumn 2019 for implementation in 2020 onwards. Implementation, if you can define it. It may also be worth waiting to see what, if any, new developments come out of the town regeneration plans that are about to go before County Council, as this may have a bearing on the sighting of any floral displays. If you feel that Oakham's InBlum's input at any stage would be helpful, we stand ready and willing to assist. We all have the same aim of enhancing the town and do not feel that there should be any conflict between us. Thank you.
Thank you, Chris. Anybody else from Oakham InBlum wanted standing? That was the Oakham... Right, okay. So, any other members of the public? On the council, we've got Rutland House Community Trust representatives here. So, if anybody from the group wants to make a statement or comment, looking for anything? Yeah?
Nice big bathrooms and big rooms.
Right, yeah. That was a nice big bathrooms and rooms, wasn't it, something?
Yeah. Yes.
Right, okay.
I'm Sean Chetton. Can you all hear me? Yep. I'm speaking as a trustee of the Rutland House Community Trust and an open president and as a local GP. Chairman and members of the Town Council. Not all of us are lucky enough to have our own home and to care for ourselves. In nineteen ninety-five, founder members of the Rutland House Community Trust, with the support of Oakham Town Council, Oakham Willowbrook, to help one disadvantaged group. This house gives those with severe learning difficulties a home, a place where they can receive the care they need, their support in making choices for their own lives, try new things and be near their families to have lives worth living. Over the past twenty-three years, standards have risen. And Willowbrook, though providing a very good service, is not able to provide what today's residents need and expect. They need bigger rooms, en suite facilities and more social space. New residents and their families are now having to make a choice of either having good up-to-date living conditions or staying near their families. In addition, we've got new needs, which is supported by social services. Although living in one's own home with carers is ideal, not everyone has the support and finance to manage this. There is a need for individual units for those who have less severe disabilities to live with support and also for emergency accommodation for those whose lives are in crisis. The plan we have presented of the new build and then refitting the old Willowbrook building fills both these needs with a minimum of disturbance to current residents. We have used the expertise of an excellent local architect, who has made the best use she can of the room available and proposed a well-planned and pleasant building with good green credentials. Rutland County Council have given us planning permission. We have talked to our neighbours and recognised their concerns and will try to minimise the inconvenience to them. Members of the council, this is not the only difficult vote taking place tonight, like the issues in Westminster. It's complex and perhaps there is no one ideal solution for everybody and some compromise is necessary. By approving our proposal, however, you will be improving the wellbeing of those with severe learning disabilities in our community. Please could you show the same vision and support as your predecessors did over twenty years ago?
Thank you. Anybody else from specifically from Rutland House Community Trust? And then so, yes. James, yeah. Yeah. James, who represents the residents.
Residents of Cleres Honclos.
Yeah, and so also speaking item eight in the Rutland House Community Trust.
That's correct, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Mr Chairman, Chairwoman, so thank you very much for the opportunity to address your... Seems to me it's becoming in danger of being a regular thing, you standing here talking. We are representing here, we're representing the residents of Cleres Honclos, which is to the south of the proposed new build. And we have a suggestion to make. First and foremost, I'd like to say, I'd like to reaffirm that the residents of Cleres Honclos are actually in favour of Rutland House Community Trusts expanding their care provision. We see this as a good local thing to do and we see it as a necessary thing. So, let me repeat that. We have no problem with Rutland House Community Trusts expanding their provision in the best way. Now, in the last month, we've heard several arguments and rebuttals concerning the development. But it's my understanding that it's now for the Town Council to approve as landlord and custodian of the public land whether you want to back the existing plan or whether you'll see that there is actually a better way. We've got an opportunity here to get this right. And what we think is that the current plan could be changed to maximise the benefit and amenity to the residents of the Willowbrook development. Let me cut to the chase here. The current plan places the most amenity of the site to the rear of the building. That is the side that the residents have least access to. So, the day areas, which are the sitting areas and the dining areas, are actually of the new proposed development, are actually on the side that affords the least amenity. From the plans that we've seen, the plans that were lodged with the council and the plans that gained planning permission, it's easy to see that actually by moving the main residential block to the north of the block and connecting the day area in the same way as the existing building, you'll maximise the amenity to the residents, particularly during the waking hours. The block to this happening is, as we all know, or as anyone who's read the pack knows, is the sewer. And that's the only technical objection of any substance that's been offered so far. But in the same way as the current building overcomes this hurdle, well, it's more of a sewer than a hurdle. But there's no reason that similar techniques of construction could not be employed in the proposed new build. We've actually done some research with Seven Trends. I'd like to hand over to Les to speak for just a minute, if that's okay.
You've used two minutes forty-five of your time. My comment really is, we'll probably hear that it can't be done. But if you look at Seven Trends' details, it can be done. Seven Trends say, where risk to public sewer is small, we are normally willing to allow building over or close to sewers. So, what can be done is exactly what has been done in the existing building. A passageway between the two parts, which doesn't have great foundations and can go over the sewer. It will require, and I would hope that you would think about this and say, we would like to approach Seven Trends to ask for their view over this possibility to develop the site to a far better use for the clients. Thank you.
Okay. Does anybody else in the room want to make any points on this, at this stage? I'm not planning on inviting members of the public to come back when we discuss this point. So, we'll consider then that the public...
Just one thing I forgot. There is a process Seven Trends do. And this is the application for building over or close to a sewer. So, it's a detailed process that they have.
Thank you. Thank you. So, I'd like to thank Dr Chetton from the Trust and James and Les from the Residents Group for taking the time to stand up and talk to us and explain these things. Before we actually move on to the item, item eight, I just want to clarify something. Everybody that has read or had access to the pack, the second point on one of the pages does state, can the building be moved? The answer that was categorically stated at the time was no. Now, interestingly there, that yes, okay. So, Seven Trends said that there are certain ways that you can do things. But there was a specific way that the question was put to the Rutland House Community Trust, where they would bring in this plan. This is the plan they want to go with. And the decision that needs to be made tonight by the council is based on that plan. There might be financial reasons why they don't want to move it or whatever they are. But the thing is, the working group that was set up by this council at the previous meeting, of which that working group met twice, it is regrettable at this stage that that Seven Trends document wasn't produced during the working group because that would have been included in the pack and maybe had maybe an impact and maybe not. So, whereas I appreciate always new information, it would have been better if it had been forthcoming in the working group. But at least everybody in the room has now heard that. And the two groups have had an opportunity to speak. Every councillor's had an opportunity to read these packs and the information's been sent out to you. So, if I look at this agenda item now, and what I'm going to do is I'm actually going to invoke standing order number six on rules of debate, item section one, where I'm actually going to propose and ask for a secondaire on only part one of this. Decisions that the council agree to the development under the current plan that was agreed by Rutland County Council. Because that is what we're here to debate. To decide, not to debate, well, debate and decide. So, from the chair, I'm proposing that the council agree to the development and... So, from the chair, I'm proposing that the council agree to the development and grant permission as per the RCC planning application submitted by Rutland House Community Trust. Alls I need is a secondar for that, then that opens up the floor for debate by the councillors. So the council will still debate, and they can still refuse it. But I don't want to debate for an hour and then find that we're not going to get anywhere. So the proposal on the table is, the council agree to the development as per the current plan. So that's my proposal. Do I have a secondar for that? Are you seconding that, Martin?
Definitely, yeah.
Thank you. So, a show of hands to support that, then? One, two, three. Oh, you can, okay. Because I'm terrible at counting.
Nine, so just...
Nine, and you're abstaining.
I'm abstaining.
Abstaining, right, okay. So now, that now means, I now open the floor up to the rest of the councillors only. I'm going to stick to the rulebook strictly here as well, that you will have only one opportunity to speak for three minutes, unless there is a point of order that comes up. And if there's a point of order, you tell me what a point of order is. Don't say point of order is an excuse to stop meeting. So every councillor has an opportunity to speak, and at the end of that, we'll then have a vote to see whether we're actually going to approve this or not formally. So, right, Martin?
As a resident in the area and the Oakham South East Ward councillor, I firstly like to say that I strongly object to this council excluding me from a working group, which was quite a major issue, which affects people within my ward. And I've listened this evening to the residents, and I now have a different opinion from what was going on, but it would be nice to have been shared that information. I've had a sensible response or a deputation from a doctor attached to the trust, and I then move on. I strongly object to the unprofessional comments and lies made by Rutland Community Trust employees on social media about me. I have raised this concern with the chairman of the trustees today, and I've also checked before the meeting with the clerk, there has been no correspondence aimed at me to engage me or educate me on this matter, as has been stated on social media today. I note in the report that councillor Adam Lowe has asked us to read all the documents and send questions to the clerk before the meeting. I welcome this change, as I have many examples from the past where he has objected to this, stating nothing should be discussed or questioned outside of a meeting. In his list of required decisions, he wants the council to review the land rent and variations of the lease. We cannot do this before we have received a valuation for the land. Moving on, we have provided, been provided with a number of photographs in this pack. A lot of that's irrelevant tonight, but we'd like to produce paper at this council anyway. And looking at the picture, which has been provided, there's a photograph with plans, and I'm sure it's an error, but it looks like it's encroaching the new building onto two existing allotments, which you don't lease. But that needs to be looked into. And that is also a concern to me about the thing, and where the trust should have come to the council, and this should have been negotiated with residents and the council before this evening. So we all know what's going on, and that, because I have a fear, which I will come to later in here, that the fact that that is built right up to allotments, we are going to have the same issue of why they acquired the land in the first place, the second piece, which was to give privacy and peace and enjoyment to the residents, which they're not going to get with two allotments by their windows. Sorry, I'm trying to be quick.
And then I rush out, run out of breath, but, but anyway, I've slightly gone off there.
But anyway, that's in looking at document B11E, the land was leased for the enjoyment of the residents and staff. Now the trust is proposing to build on that land. Are they going to apply to the council for additional allotment spaces so that enjoyment can continue? That was my only question, which wasn't answered before the meeting, but never mind. On point G, it says ground rate reviewed by solicitor once all decisions are made and agreed. So that's the contradiction, we're being asked to do that tonight, but we're also being told that it will be done later. But it's not the responsibility of the solicitor to make those decisions, that's the decision of this council, but it's our responsibility to review rents, not a solicitor's. Point one, as we go from letters to numbers, it says it's within the boundary of the agreed lease. I've already pointed out the photo of the plan, which would suggest that this is not within the boundary, but that could be a mistake, anyway.
Martin, we've only got three minutes.
Yeah, can I finish? Because I think it's important, so...
Yes, Daniel.
Point eight is wrong to conclude the new development is within the existing development, as this is to be built on a separate garden space, it's not within the existing development. They have two separate leases. And then we've got B3 delegated report from RCC, and I'm pleased now that I'm able to read that there will be two extra staff. The report also highlights what are not planning issues, such as various types of noise. Then it goes on to say, the occupiers are vulnerable adults in care and unlikely to roam into the watercourse. Is there any guarantee that this won't happen? The report goes on to say, open spaces do not form part of the allotments or playing fields. But that's wrong, because it did form part of the allotments before the council issued the lease to the trust to turn it into a garden for the enjoyment of residents and staff.
We're only four minutes now, Martin.
Okay, I'm getting sort of, I'm not going to try, but I think it's important I finish, if I haven't had any other opportunity in meetings or anything. There is mention of the parking. I think bearing in mind the comments in other reports, we have, this is a very important comment, the planning officer says, there is adequate parking facility to cater for the proposed new building, even without the proposed eight new spaces. If the planning officer is correct, then I propose the council does not grant permission for these additional eight spaces, and some of the green area is retained. The planning officer incorrectly describes Willow Crescent as Willow Close, and is not and is not subject to through traffic. This is very wrong. The road is the main route for the Oakham Hopper bus service. It is a route for many lorries and vans, which deliver to cost-cutter shop and catering supplies to the school. Many are also aware of the school-run traffic. And then we move on to report BIV from the trust.
Right, Count Martin, sorry, five minutes thirty now. You're two, you're nearly double the amount of time that you should have been allowed.
I appreciate that, but that's the last paragraph, because you've seen it, but...
If you can do it in twenty seconds, you can make it.
Yeah, I'm trying to be quick. I'm pleased the trust is to sort the noise from the radio for local residents. As stated, when I refer to the planning report, I think the council should not commit the new car park. If it does not agree with me, then I request they consider no lighting, as there is far too much light pollution in the town, and recent national reports have highlighted the damaging effect on the environment and the wildlife caused by new white LED streetlights. I note the trust has apologised for the breach of its lease, and is happy that the council is normally willing to... Sorry, I got that wrong. At least, because we are working backwards, that's what I'm trying to say, is that I noticed that as a council, we're now working backwards. But perhaps the trust would like to apologise for its unprofessional conduct towards objectors and lack of consultation with neighbours, and I'm talking about the original lack, because they've said tonight they seem to be happy. Finally, I would have loved to have been including all aspects of this project that is aiming to provide accommodation for what is described as vulnerable people, and I'd like to say publicly, despite the comments that are on social media from staff and supporters, I have no objection to what the trust is doing or aiming to achieve.
Right, thank you, Martin. That was just over seven minutes. That's all, and I know that you have no objection, because in theory you've seconded the motion anyway.
Yeah.
So I already see that you're in favour of it. Does any other members of the council want to...
But I think we need to work together and work on...
Thank you.
...guessing what everyone wants.
So, yes, does any other members of the council want to say something? I might as well be going around the table, actually, but there's not many people who want to speak, so I'll come to Alan.
I had visited Willowbrook, and anybody on the council would invite us to go there to look round, so there was no, nothing to stop us at all. Also, there's just one question, because it was brought up by the public today about this being able to build over the sewer like it is in the existing building, and if we were told it couldn't, we couldn't alter it, it seems now that it could be altered. So that's why, you know, what was the reason why they couldn't alter it before, please? That's all I want to know.
I will answer that question.
Thank you.
I think, I think in actual fact, it gets back to the comment that the Willowbrook architect came up with the design, and this is what I gleaned from the meetings that we'd had, and this was the design they presented. They have, they are working on a shoestring budget, and their plan is to go forward with the design they've got. So it's not that they, they've not misled anybody, it's not that they could, would, or should, it's just that they said, this is the plan we want to go with. That is as simple as that, and that's why I said at the beginning that I proposed that we go with what the county council have proposed. So there are, most things can be done if you put your mind to it, but they may also incur additional costs, okay? And because I've already said I'm not going to invite anybody else now to speak back, all I'm doing there is, what I gleaned from the meeting, is that, no, the question is asked, would Rutland House Community Trust consider moving the building, opening the building up a bit, doing similar things? I think Joy brought it up in that fact, and it came up twice. Would we consider, would the RHCT consider moving it away a bit, or doing it slightly differently, or moving it completely up that way away from the head row? And it was a categoric, really, not really known. This is the plan that we've come with, it's the plan that RCC has passed, it's already cost a lot of money, I think, to get that done, so it's a no. So that's what we thought.
That's why I absolutely...
Yeah, that's fine, that's okay. Peter?
Daniel.
Yeah?
I can wait.
Right, okay, thank you. Don't stop him there. And then we'll be down afterwards, and then Joy, after that, so, right, Peter?
Yes, thank you, Chairman. Yes, I've also visited the site, so well acquainted with the layout and everything. We've heard from the trustee very eloquently the need, and I think as a town council, we should show leadership and support this. Obviously, there are issues still to be resolved, but I think tonight we should support it in principle. The devil will be in the detail, but it's not beyond the wit of man to sort this out. There will be legal requirements and so forth, but I don't think we want to keep this going round and round. We really want to bring it, bring it to a head, so I should be supporting.
Okay. Forty seconds, it's in the... And the opposite would be that, no, as long as you need. Well, no more than, ideally no more than three minutes.
Brilliant, okay. Very well, thanks, I haven't been sort of taking notice of this, because I try to stay away from it. The reason why I've not been round to visit is because being a military tent house, people are coming round your accommodation quite a lot, especially when you're trying to get funding for them to fix their eating. I don't, I never appreciated that when they came round to my room, so I've tried to respect the privacy of everyone involved. That being said, I am in support of this. The only questions I have got, and starting to delve into the realms of knick-knack and trivia here, we have seen pictures of sort of the surrounding areas, some of it is looking very tatty, and not just that, but there is furniture thrown to one side. My worry there is that, given more space and more building material, where is this going to be going? So I would expect anything that is passed to be followed through to completion and the ground's actually put back, which is, I'd say was fair enough. Reference what Cason Brooks was saying about assessing the actual, the rent itself. I don't see this as something we should be trying to milk. If there's enough that we're getting from it, as in for the county, for the, you know, for the actual public purse, then fair enough. We shouldn't be trying to make money on this. But I would expect that that saving is then put back in to the actual establishment itself. I think that's only fair. If that's, if that's possible, I don't know, I would like to see some further sort of information on that, because otherwise it just seems like you're lying in someone else's pockets, and that would really irritate me. Who's the other one? I did notice in there, it said that the trees, the screening, hadn't actually been agreed fully with the residents, but was a work in progress. That to me doesn't sit right, because that's the sort of thing where, just playing devil's advocate, I'm sort of, okay, then, this is something we could probably do as a written agreement, brilliant. If it's a verbal agreement, it's not worth a paper spitting on. So I would expect that to be squared away before I know. Apart from that, I'll say it's an absolutely wonderful institution, I'm very proud of seeing this council, I think you'll do a wonderful job. Thank you.
Joy? Thank you, Joy.
I can answer your question on the rent. There is a regulation around it. It was, let me see, what's it said? Just one second.
Fluff, anyway.
The regulation says that we are, we are, from secondary status, says we have to request market values, because we are representing the town.
That's what I've been saying all along, and then I get told we have to give it to them.
Joy?
This isn't a motive issue, because it is a good facility, and I am in favour of the work that it does, and would like to see something go forward. However, I do have reservations. I'm aware that the existing building is not up to standard, but we are not discussing that existing building at the moment, because that could be and could have been at any time renovated and updated. This doesn't affect the new build. The land was leased as amenity land for the residents of Willowbrook. We noted when we went to visit that there was goalposts out there on the grass, and they had a greenhouse, and it seems reasonable to expect that any further development should be designed to remain, to retain recreational amenity land for residents. There will be an increased number of residents on the site, as from the remodelling of the older building with bedrooms and sitting rooms, and what the doctor here has said, we will have more active people there, who will also presumably be needing some outside space. The current plans with the parking and the new build leave a very small amount of level and available amenity space for the residents, and all of that space is in the shadow of the hedge, because the sun is on the other side. So it doesn't look to me to be keeping the spirit of the reason the land was given in the first place. I'm also concerned that the sighting of the building and the direction of the sun and the hedge will leave a less than satisfactory amount of quality of life for the people living in the buildings, and this does concern me. We are, we, as a town council, are being asked to agree a building, and I feel it is not the best building that we could produce, but this is the building that we're being offered. Before I joined the town council, I was here as a member of the public, when the planning application for this new build came through the council, and the council discussed it at length and unanimously rejected it. Concerns have been raised through the working party, we've had two meetings, and we've talked through various concerns that the residents have had, that the council has, and we have discussed it, but there has been no alteration to the original plans, there has been no compromise, there's been no beating halfway. I personally would welcome further talks in the future for a more acceptable plan to fit the space, that would allow for more amenity land, and would provide a better facility.
Yeah, it's June, it's actually... I don't have a lot to say. I joined the council in Oakham because I believe that as a councillor, I could make a difference in situations like this, to help people. That's my sense in love, to try and help people. I have been involved with vulnerable people most of my life, and I understand totally why the amenities required. Personally, I support it 100%. I can see the need in the present condition to be modernised, to give people better standards to live in. I also feel for the parents who, as they grow older, with children with learning difficulties, worry about where their children will go. They don't want them to go out of area, and they want good accommodation. I want to support it, I do support it. I would feel very failed if Rutland doesn't grab this opportunity to make a difference to people who need it. And I'm sorry to be emotional, but where people have a need, I want to be able to give that... want to be able to give that, and that's why I became a councillor. If the council rejects it and doesn't support it, then I may decide not to continue, because it isn't what I'm about, so.
Thank you, Les, thank you, Gina.
I didn't have full three minutes, it's gonna, can I have my, a third time now, please?
You had an option to speak.
Yeah, but I've got more.
Let me finish, please. You had an option to speak, however, because I'm such an understanding, and this is a very serious matter, I'm more than prepared to let you finish off.
Thank you.
Ten seconds.
I'd like to reiterate what Gina said, and I'm totally in favour, and can I just say, we were asked to vote if we wanted to work on the present things, the present plans. I was the only one who abstained until I had this decision.
We're going to come back to that in a minute.
Well, no, sorry, but people have all voted except me to just go on the plans that are set, so that's why I can't understand that the questions are being asked now, thank you.
Okay, that's right. Right, you've already spoken.
Yeah, but I'd just like to make a proposal with an amendment.
Well, you want to, you want to...
Yes, because I'd like, I don't think we should be voting to accept the planning application as submitted. I would like to say, yes, the building's fine, but I would also like to add the point, less the car park, because the planning officer has said, and it has been raised by other members, that they need the green space. The report is very clear that we have here from the planning officer that they don't need, they don't need the new car park with the eight spaces.
Who said that?
The planning officer, if you're not ready, you told us to read it.